As it comes down the county road, can you bring that county road up again? Okay, right there. So Foster's Road comes in here and it lies right here and it follows Foster's Road and then it follows Foster's property line and it'll go right up and follow these property lines as it goes around and as it comes back it follows all the property lines. So that'd be the AWAs on the backside of the, everything on the backside of the property lines are the Wilder Studies area. And it comes from this road right here, this road through here. So this would be Wilder and Study area, this would be Wilder and Study area, this would be Wilder and Study area and come over here. And then Wilder Study area runs on all the outside and then properties up to there.
But you're asking about the county road and sand dunes going to the intersection I guess, the break here.
Yeah, breaks right here. Where, here's Foster's Road. This is Wilder and Study area right here now. It follows Foster's Road and then goes up.
So go back that way.
Yep, and it follows this fence line.
Yeah.
And it goes straight up to the next line. Here's that other road.
So it runs basically all over the place.
Yes.
All those roads of this county doesn't have nothing to do with roads. Everything here, most of it here.
So before you did anything with that road, you'd like to have permission to straighten it out, is that my understanding?
Well, the part that's soft is before you get to the sand dunes, I really, it's across the river, it's about two miles there. Um, so it wouldn't matter alignment on it or not because we wouldn't do nothing with it, it just needs more rock face in it. And that'd be something to go through road advisory and where funding is, they would help, you know, they look at, uh, industry traffic, maybe, uh, traffic count would play a big role in that. So, you know, it's like how many trucks coming out of there, how do you mean, you're just, it's, it's gonna, it'd need help if you're gonna bring a lot of trucks out there.
Thank you. So I have a question, Mr. Chairman. The way, the way the application is worded and the way that, um, Mr. Emery's talked, it sounds like they're not gonna operate the water bottling business. It's, it's up for contract, this is an outside party, is that...
We haven't quite decided yet. We've been approached by a few people that have really good prices and, you know, wanna buy the water. However, I would like to keep it small and I might just buy the water bottling machine myself and run it all myself.
Is there a way that, I mean, it sounds like the road is a big issue, is there a way that, that, that the conditional permit can include that I have to pay for the road? I mean, I, I don't know, I just...
It's a lot of water.
You know, you're not talking about, you know, rocking that much of a road anyway. I mean, it's, when, and when we first did the alignment, it was in the subdivision we put in. And now we've come to this agreement, we'll just take them two bad corners out in the sand dunes and, cause it's a side deal.
Right.
And, and Sam's really worked at it over the years too, he's worked on the bank, it took a lot of the sage brush away and, and worked on that one side of the slope and he's really helped out there too, through there. He's kinda cheap, well, cutting corners out, but there's two corners, if they take four feet of them out, you know, the sideline would be perfect then, on the back slope. The, the mountain, you know, the road construction isn't that big of a deal. Rick said there's a double spots in the river, then we got saw spots, but that's because we have them anyway. And we run equipment in and out of there all the time. Cow truck, from cow truck.
If we have the money and, and the, the resources that are close, I mean, it's just a road that could use some help, I mean, always has, without the bottom company or not.
Would like some help, rather than price wise.
But it would need help whether or not they have a business out there or not.
Right.
Anytime when the cross goes out in February and we have any kind of moisture, you know, everybody got some used to the drought the last four years and this year I got all this winter. I never had so many problems in my life, you know, people wasn't even...
Please.
So, okay, with the town plan commission.
We can take one of these good ones up here and, but we didn't start silver, we're facing our last...
We're running through our last, last application. Come in, that's gonna happen too. Hang on a minute, we're getting out of shape here. Um, who else would like to testify in this application? Mr. Relling, just approach please. We have a copy of your email.
We're sending an email to you and I just basically want to emphasize, the concern is the road. You know, I mean, if he's doing 5,000 gallons a day, you know, eight, eight gallons a gallon, I mean, it's gonna be a 20 ton going across that road day in and day out, so. We're concerned on that. Um, also concerned on the RV park for 10 people, you know, our desert's getting brash, um, up there from four-wheelers and motorcycle riders. It's just gonna be an added burden on that desert up there. Um, we've got some trails that are, look like a motocross track up there that we're having issues with and we're just concerned on these extra people, they're gonna be living out there. You know, what are they gonna do in their off-hours?
Right. Not to answer for, for, uh, Mr. Emery, but they're allowed 5,000 gallons, but they still have to sell it.
That's true. But our concern is, is that, yeah, it's, I mean, we want them to succeed at the water bottling plant, not a problem there.
Okay.
It's just down the line, if we have a problem with that road, who, who do we address? How do we fix this problem?
I think you come back to the county commissioners via the roadmaster and demand that they fix the road. But as far as the planning commission goes, that's not our purview.
Yeah.
I understand your concerns, though. Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay. Anybody else like to give testimony?
Can I ask one question?
Could you come up here, sir, tell us your name?
Uh, Bob Carlin from Paisley.
Okay.
And I guess my question is, over the road, I'm assuming the trucks will be licensed, they will pay their PUCs and their road use. What's the big deal? I mean, if, if we're paying that, that's what we pay to operate on these roads.
Yeah, well...
But I've got commercial trucks.
We certainly understand that.
And, and the county receives out of those spaces.
We just had to instruct the commissioners to fix the road or else.
Right, but...
It doesn't work that way.
But does, does that argument meet the criteria for approval or, or disapproval from you guys?
Yeah, maybe that. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Anybody else like to give testimony in this matter? Thank you. We will close the public portion of this application, discussion on the board, if any. So I, I guess I'd ask again, help me is, I mean, there's not a way that the, part of the, the permit be required that they maintain the road themselves or at least provide funding to maintain the roads themselves?
Considering that it's a public road, it's pretty tough to enforce.
Right.
If it was across their land and they wanted us, us, the county, to go and fix the road, you know what, what we'd tell them, so. It works both ways. Um, however, if they're, they have an enterprise that gets so successful and the road is totally zeroed out, I think it would be in their interest.
Right.
To come back to the county commissioners and say, we need some help, we've got a thriving business, but we can't get out of the place because you people haven't fixed that road. How about it? But I don't think that's a planning commissions place. If there were 100 houses along there and these trucks were gonna bury them in sand daily, I think we'd have some concerns, but, uh, it's a pretty wild and woolly area and I understand, uh, the Relling's, uh, concern about being able to get out of their property and being able to haul cows back and forth and one thing or another. And I know that the Emerys have cows to move as well, they don't always walk where they wanna go. So, anyway, if there's no discussion amongst the board, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to accept petition, permit, application number 16-003, uh, and accept staff finding.
Thank you, we have a second here. I'll second that. Call the board, please start.
Justin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Meredith?
Hi.
Ginger?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Folks, Darwin will be attached. And as I said earlier, we will permit you to death eventually. Thank you, thank you. As soon as I close this one, I'll, I'll... Thank you, guys. It's okay. Thank you. Very good, thank you. See you. All ashore, that's going ashore. If there's nothing else, I think we'll dispense with any new business. I just wanted to remind the members of the board that, uh, we want to continue our Monday at noon check-in prior to the planning meeting to let Darwin know that you will or will not be here. And if you can't be here, can you be on a conference call for none of the, but we can't do conference calls to Mexico anymore, it's just too expensive. Um, I'll entertain a motion to close this meeting.
Well, let's keep this meeting going actually. We're already open, so that's fine, then let's have, uh, quick recess, but gathering and then we'll, we'll get the town's planning commission all seated and we'll...
Thank you, it gets going. I just want to remind everybody that, uh, there's no firearms along the building. If you need to get out of the building in an emergency, go that way down the exit sign or that way to the double exit in the main entrance. If you have a cell phone, please mute it. If you need to take a call, please help yourself to the hallway. I'm already searching.
Very good. I'm coordinating with the chairman for the, uh, planning commission for the town. And we are going to reconvene our meeting, uh, that we started earlier this evening. And we're going to be, uh, working with the combined public hearing on the town application number 667, county number 15-043-CPA-UTB, Red Rock Biofuel to amend the Lakeview River boundary and incorporate, incorporate, uh, happens biofuel facilities property located south of Kedramus Road, if I'm saying that correctly. And, uh, application included removing property from the Urban Growth Boundary north of Kedramus Road. And the application also included the comprehensive plan map amendment to designate the biofuel facility property as C1, uh, central commercial. And that finishes our designation statement right now. We have, uh, would you introduce yourselves, uh, representatives from the...
Dennis Moody, board member.
Jan Anz, board member.
Yeah, I'm a board member.
Board member, sure. Thank you for, uh, coming over, you know, it's offered, I've started stopping meetings , but, cause it's, it's an important situation, so we want to get at it. Chairman, are you all set there?
Sure. I want to begin.
We'll have a, an overview from our planning director.
Okay. How's it? It's good to see you all tonight. I will stand trying to speak up as best as I can. Um, what's been noticed and, and applied for is an urban growth boundary adjustment, um, for the, uh, in, into the urban growth boundary of the town of Lakeview. Uh, tonight's joint meeting is, is obviously between the, the, uh, county planning commission as well as the town planning commission. Red Rock Biofuels is, is something that I believe everyone is aware of. They have, uh, you know, they're looking at coming into town for a couple of years now. Um, approximately, uh, you know, 13 months ago, uh, they were approved for their land use to create a biofuels facility, um, in the area that's outlined in red. Notices were, were sent out, I believe on the 26th of the month of January, um, to adjacent property owners of which are outlined in purple on, on the screen. Uh, the yellow line represents the urban growth boundary current and then the, the blue outlined, um, where my cursor's at, is, is the property that we're talking about as the property that would be swapped out, so to speak, uh, in this urban growth boundary adjustment. Um, the, the part that's outlined in blue are the current, uh, city boundaries. Uh, actually, I need to update that, town just recently went through an annexation. Um, this...
Darwin, could you, swapped out is an interesting term, could you expand on that a little bit?
Yep. Yeah, I will. So, so the urban growth boundary as it exists, uh, you know, is, uh, only allows for the services of the, of the town to be extended to properties within that boundary. So we're talking about sewer and water. So, uh, Red Rock Biofuels has, has shown interest in being within urban growth boundary and eventually being annexed as well into town limits. Uh, they are desiring to use, uh, water and sewer, uh, from the town. Um, their current approval, which still stands, uh, recognized that they would use their own water and, uh, sewer source, which they can still develop if this wasn't approved. Uh, this, this process, uh, is, uh, kind of, uh, couple, couple steps. First, the planning commissions, uh, both from the town and county would, would make recommend, they would hear that the application, uh, as, um, a legislative, uh, process and then that would get forwarded to, uh, for the county, to the board of commissioners and from the town to the town council. Uh, that recommendation, um, you know, will be made in, in this setting, uh, however, possibly not tonight. Uh, the applicants have, uh, I, I will jump right into their application. Uh, application was submitted, uh, December 22nd, um, to the, to the county and to the town and, and, uh, there will be, um, you know, additions similar to all major projects to the application, um, by the, by the applicants to, to give greater detail in the process, uh, to what they're proposing and how they feel that they meet, uh, all conditions of approval and standards that need to be met. Uh, from both local and, and state statute and, and administrative law. Quickly tonight, and I, I appreciate and acknowledge that there are many folks here who'd like to, to give, um, testimony. This is a, is a hearing, uh, we are open for that hearing now. Um, as I finish up my, um, my summary, I, I want to first, uh, point out that the applicants have, as of, um, February, uh, 4th, it's the date I received this by, via email, have asked, um, for a, a continuance of this hearing. Um, some of you that have been by the office have already explained this to them, but, um, they, uh, would like to have this joint hearing for the, the county and the town, um, rescheduled, or, sorry, not rescheduled, but continued to the reg, uh, next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting hearing date, which is, um, March 15th. Um, the typical application will receive a staff report, um, and that's prepared, you know, by even the town staff and my, myself, that would, would address all those criterias. Large projects such as this is, uh, major, uh, land use decisions would, uh, it's always the applicants were to prove to, to show how the criteria is met. The applicants wish to have more time to prepare that material, um, and, and as such, uh, we're not, we, the county or the town are not prepared what they staffed for this time, but a, a brief memo, uh, was prepared by myself that kind of addressed, um, you know, the summary of, of what we're talking about tonight, how legal notices were sent, the procedures for, um, amendments, um, as well as, as, uh, some of the, the materials that I've received so far. Um, if there are any questions, certainly for me, I'd be glad to, to discuss them further, but is, uh, as my recommendation as staff to, to have a continuance held on the 15th of, of March, uh, here again at the courthouse, uh, as, to start as a timed item at seven o'clock, so.
Darren, would it be accurate to say that we are not adequately armed at this moment to assess anything that anyone would like to say for or against this project at this time?
That would definitely...
What I'm saying is, we can't, if someone raises an issue and we don't know what the basic tenants are to start with, we're gonna be shooting and guessing and not being able to give the public proper answers to their concerns. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. And I, I wish certainly as, as staff, uh, that we were a little more prepared for all of you, um, but having said that, I, I recognize the fact that this gives everyone involved more time to be prepared for, you know, your arguments either for or against, uh, certainly for the applicants, um, but, and, and again, as a public, we can't not take your testimony, but again, next, next, uh, meeting, if, if the commissioners here so choose to, to set that date and, and time certain, then they would be able to take testimony and, and again, this is a recommendation to those other boards I mentioned, in which further testimony can be given at that time, but we would certainly during the planning commission level like to, to get any, uh, you know, concerns out there, um, you know, so that the, the town council and, and the board of commissioners don't kind of get blindsided by new information coming up that, that may, may be relevant to their decision.
I just had to, I guess, do I stand up there if I just had a question or can I do a question from here? Well, my, my question is, is a continuance.
Sarah Bunyan.
My name is Sarah Bunyan and I live in the Urban Growth Boundary, 955-94, Kaiser Belane. Um, my concern is the continuance, you're not gonna go and put it in the paper again. And so, because there's gonna be more things to comment because they say they're gonna add supplemental information, I think it would be a duty of all of us to inform the public again through the process of the newspaper to say, Red Rock has added some more to their application, a supplemental to where it's advertised again for people to be able to be aware of it. Um, I know I'm not gonna make a comment now because I have no idea what they're changing or what they're adding to. I will make a comment when the hearing comes again, but I, I just feel that it can, it's not really a continuance and I don't know the definition of that for, for the land use, but I just feel that because it's supplemental, it's more information, there's a process for the public, you know, and, and it's, you know, to do it right, that would be nice to put it in the paper again, re-advertise due to this. So people can be aware that there is more information on that and more people might be aware, wanting to know that information at that point. So that's my only comment.
Thank you.
I have to agree with Sarah on that point. And so if we're changing the, the game tonight, we ought to inform the public.
Yeah.
Darwin, had you intended to republish this?
My intention was to have the full hearing tonight and then continue if needed after, you know, we got all evidence out there already. Um, having, you know, said that, this, this is certainly of great concern to the community. Um, there, there, and may be additions that, that by law requires to renotice. Um, legal counsel has, you know, for the applicants, um, who have done, you know, hundreds, maybe thousands of urban growth boundary adjustments in the past, um, as well as, uh, state, um, DLCD reps have informed me that, that this as a published, uh, meeting and notice to adjacence does qualify as a, a hearing and can be continued, um, and therefore we meet all legal requirements so far. Um, a continuance does not require renoticing to adjacence or publish in the paper. Um, we would, certainly it has to be 24 hours, uh, out and then posted and we post it certainly in the courthouse, but it's, it's up to both boards to, you know, to make that determination. But again, it wasn't my intention to renotice, even given the information.
Would be open to instructions from us to publicize the continuance and when the next meeting will occur.
Yeah, and I, I will, yes, absolutely, and I will like to, to mention that the applicants, you know, have, uh, you know, submitted a fee that is, is substantial that will, you know, cover our costs and they, they will, uh, are required to reimburse for said notice and so.
Right. Do you have a question back there from Tom Manager?
Yeah, thank you. Ray says manager, but now like, uh, just so everybody knows and I know he hasn't taken an opportunity to introduce himself, Craig Stone, uh, over here, the one that doesn't match the rest of us. Got a tie.
Darwin, you probably have a tie.
I have.
All right.
Anyway, one, one of the ones that really stands out in the crowd. He does represent Red Rock and the, uh, the consulting firm that has been hired by Red Rock to pursue this application for the town and the county, but what I wanted to bring up, as, as I've met with, with Craig this afternoon and Darwin as well, that, uh, in our planning commission, uh, meeting or following our meeting this evening at the town hall are another subject, uh, the discussion about the, uh, this continuance, uh, was, there was, there was some discussion about it and Janine brought up a good point, I would like to just raise that for Darwin and, uh, you know, for Craig's information, I guess, but the planning commission members, and that is that, you know, to, in order to have a meeting, have a complete staff report, uh, to us and ready for, to go out as required for the planning commission meeting on, uh, for March 15th is, is, uh, we're on a very short timeframe already. We would need that application by this Friday, I believe, in order for that to happen and I, and I don't believe that we're quite ready for that. So I think, I would like to hear some discussion with regards to the planning commissions, if you're inclined to want to continue this, uh, as has been requested, that you think about is, are we doing everybody a favor by continuing it to March or should this really be continued to your April meeting in order to allow for time for all of this to get in in time to be processed by staff and out to planning commission members? That's my question. And I know, and I know I'm talking with Craig earlier today that, uh, you know, that seemed like a long ways out, but we're really needing three weeks lag time in order to get this stuff processed now like it needs to be.
What Mr. Simms is referring to is that there's a legal requirement to notify the public in the paper, um, so many days and weeks in advance of the next meeting and if we fail to do that and somebody doesn't get notified, then they have grounds to appeal this whole thing even if they don't show up. So we've got, or if they miss it for whatever reason, so we're leaving ourselves open because if we cut, go to the next, the next meeting of planning commission, we're, we're cutting it awfully short as far as, um, having an adequate staff report so that both planning commissions can answer questions put to them by the public or by the applicant or by people who are opposed to the application. Yes, sir?
Our town planning commission would suspect somewhat of a disadvantage given not had access to a staff report in any details of any consequence at all, uh, regarding the, uh, application and I'm thinking in terms of the timeframe as, as, uh, Mr. Simms pointed out, uh, to have that information, whatever, uh, hasn't been prepared yet, uh, by Friday seemed like, uh, an unlikely event, uh, and to go through this twice, uh, it may well be better to, uh, extend it on, uh, into April, uh, rather than, uh, go further publications and notices and gather the information and, and, uh, not, not being prepared to have them.
Anybody, anybody else have anything to say?
Mr. John, we're going to ask Mr. Stone when he thinks he could file the material for us.
That's a good one.
Honestly, I think, hearing from you as far as when we might anticipate it reasonably so we can determine a date.
Sure. Through the record, Craig Stone, um, we are working, uh, in earnest on the application, which initially involved merely the flipping of urban growth boundary land, but as the staffs of the town and county rightly noted, it also involves some changes to the conference of plan designations of the town and the county. And so we're pulling those additional component pieces together. As to when I hope to have it filed, there are some things out of my control that I am not the only, um, person sort of on our critical path. There are other things that need to occur and fall into place and as soon as those do, we'll file it. Um, so I, I'm being cagey here, I guess, in, in straightforwardly answering your question, but I really don't know. We will file it as quickly as we can, uh, but not everything is under my control and I, I just can't give you a date.
Thanks, Mr. John. Thanks, Mr. Stone. Any other questions?
Yes, sir. I have one.
Would you stand up and tell us your name?
Bob Carlin from Paisley. And I own a piece of property adjacent there within that. And you've mentioned a couple of times that you're going to flip property. What's, what's that about?
Darwin?
So, there's, there's a number of ways to get urban growth boundary adjustment accomplished under or administrative rule and the revised statute. So, there's a criteria, which, again, our, our staff report will address that criteria when we have all the materials back from the applicant. But is the approach that they would like to take as applicants to do a like-for-like swap out of lands that are, and we call it inclusion and exclusion properties. So, those, the stuff that's on red and outlined is, is the location of the Red Rock Biofuels approved land use for a biofuels facility. And again, they need to adjust the yellow line to kind of wrap around that property. Not the entire property, but kind of across, you know, the southern half. There would be a line directly from the rail out to a highway, kind of crossing that dark shaded area, roughly speaking. And then, it would, it would then essentially take what's inside their growth boundary outside of it. And it would then retain what the current zoning of the inclusion property has on it, which is-
A piece that's in the city now will now be, no longer be considered in the urban growth boundary. And it'll be designated agriculture. The piece that's outside that we're working on, where the biofuels, will become a commercial piece of property within the urban growth boundary. So, we've got an island, basically, of property that we're swapping. That's what they mean by the swap.
Right. Does Red Rock own both pieces of property?
Uh, not at this time.
They've got options for both of them. That's the best answer I can give you. They've got options to purchase both of them, in which they would, so long as they get all the rest of their, you know.
So, it's their property, so they can do it.
Yeah.
But they're agreeing to let that property that's in the city, is this going to be good for cows and that's it? Or something agriculturally speaking? You won't be able to put up a Walmart next week? It's no longer going to be commercial. And that's one of the ways you can swap the property so we can get that, the Red Rock Biofuels within the urban growth boundary so they can get the services from the city that they would like. Otherwise, they won't get them. Yes, sir. Would you stand up and tell us your name, sir?
I'm James Engler. I live on that huge shaped property right here where he's got the, the old, so the land across from my property in the blue, that will stay as ag property? Is that going in to rule R1 property?
No, definitely not R1. It's, it's currently zoned and designated as commercial.
Commercial.
But if this was approved, then it would be swapped out for what? For an A2 designation.
Agriculture.
Agriculture, you know.
Same as what my property is across the street.
Yes.
And what is the reasoning that it has to be swapped out? Are you limited to how much commercial property you can have?
No, it's more a matter of pieces-
Preference?
Pieces of property more or less of the same size. You have one's fifty-four acres, and not including the stuff south of that little creek. And the whole, whole property is eighty-seven, but there'd be a partition across the bottoms likely. And the property in town is sixty-four acres. So, it's fifty-four, sixty-four, they're pretty close. And that satisfies the criterion, as far as the state's concerned, of what you can do with your urban growth boundary. That's like the Berlin Wall, the urban growth boundary. You've got to have a good reason and good criterion to make that swap. The only way you can do it is make a swap. So, you've got to say, okay, we'll give up using that land inside the urban growth boundary if you let us add this little piece on the outside and make it commercial.
But just planning designations have to be the same as well in a swap?
And Bob, thank you for your question. I, I wish we were a little, I wish we were more prepared for your question with kind of the breakdown of the possibilities for an urban growth boundary adjustment. You can simply add to an urban growth boundary. That's a little bit more complex and complicated to get approved. There's a higher burden of proof that you've got to meet. And so, this was the applicants' approach. And again, we'll have more details at the next hearing, whenever that is.
It, it looks to me like you're taking the property in blue and limiting the options for it from now on.
Essentially, that's true. That's correct. And again, Red Rock-
Hold that.
Well, again, Red Rock has, has the option to purchase that. But those who know the area, it's definitely a-
If they want to take or replace the land, they have an option on. Well, that's up to them.
Right. I, you know, it's their land, it's their option, is my opinion.
Now, if someone who has property nearby thinks that that's going to affect them somehow or that their property value, please come to that meeting in April and stand up for your rights. If there are no other questions or comments?
I have one question. I don't know that it, maybe it has something to do with what we're talking about tonight. Maybe not. But I'm just curious as to, we're, we're basically looking at extending this hearing into April, possibly? It's another sixty days. What, if anything, is this going to affect in the process of the overall whole process with Red Rock? Or do we know?
I, I can't answer that. I don't know if Craig Stone could on the applicant side.
It's their problem that, that we're not ready.
It is.
So, if, if they suffer from, from that, I guess it's just not very pleasant. But it's one of the prices of doing business. If, if you're going to, you know, you dance with the girl at Brungia, sort of thing.
Right, and they're aware of that. They understand that this can change.
They do now. They do now.
Thank you, that's all.
I, I just had, you're designating it commercial. What's the difference between industrial and commercial? Why aren't we going for industrial since they are going to be making fuels and all kinds of stuff? What's, why aren't we doing industrial? That's my question. Instead of doing the commercial like, you know, just a regular business? And it's not a regular business, it is industrial business. So, can someone answer that?
Yeah, I-
I don't know.
I think I've, I've heard and spoken enough with the applicants to know the urban growth boundary process. And again, on this type of urban growth boundary adjustment, it needs to be like-for-like. So, essentially, you're switching exactly what, the two that you have.
Right.
So, but that can be followed up with a then zone change to the industrial, which would probably best fit the use when it becomes-
But we already, but, but we already know that Red Rock's going in there. We already know it's not going to be a commercial. We already know it's going to be industrial. So, why are we not talking about it now? And we're going through a process, a huge process for everybody. Why aren't we just kind of talking about it now? What, why are we just going to wait until they get the land and then go back in and change it? We're just like dueling lands right now and with no rhyme or reason. I can't see it.
And I, just to, I wanted to look back at what the notice actually said because I, I believe that we were, the intent is, like you say, and so that-
Right. It's intent, but we're-
But what I'm saying, Sarah, is that the applicants won't provide us with more detail. And hopefully, in that same process, if we would have to re-notice, then we'd have to re-notice. But we have tried to streamline all processes in which this, they have to go through. And we're not, anyway, trying to-
Streamlining is one thing, but, but when it's, when you can see that they're going to be industrial and you are all the planning commissions of, of our county, our city, I just think that we need to give it some more thought in what, really what we are doing. Because this is future. This isn't just for us to, to make sure Red Rock has the commercial zoning first. Then, when they get in there, we go for industrial. It, it doesn't work like that. LCDC rules of the state of Oregon doesn't work like that. So, that's, but I never, I don't know the definition. What is the definition of commercial versus industrial? I, I can't find it when I look through some of the thing. Unless I'm not, if somebody has it in a book and gets me a page, that would be great. But I can't find it. So, I'm asking you guys, what's that difference? And if that's really what, what it should be?
I appreciate your concern. And they're going to be, they'll be addressed more, what we're talking about.
Any other comments? Well.
I guess I do have to respond.
Stand up and tell us your name.
Honey Hobbly. I live on Catterness Road, and we have a business there. And we're not in the red or the yellow. And we don't want to be in the urban growth boundary. We're not going to be, is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah, that's correct. You're, you're probably not being addressed.
We will not be in the urban growth boundary at all.
That's correct. Well, as the board, county board, I'll entertain a motion to grant a continuance in our portion of this to April, what date? Thank you. That would be your regular time.
Right, for Tuesday?
So moved. Go, go. Have a second, or? I'll second it.
Time and place here at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock again. And we'll make every effort to be finished on time this time.
You go, Will?
Now, what's the date?
April nineteenth, seven o'clock here at the courthouse.
Everybody clear? Okay, all of all, please.
Justin?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Yes, sir.
Hi.
Ginger?
Yes.
Darwin?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Well, sure.
It's up to the Lakeview Planning Commission now?
I make a motion as to, we need to, we're to make a motion that the town planning commission accept the same timeframe as the county or planning commission timeframe.
I'll second that. Have a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion to close this meeting.
We propose to-
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any opinions, staff?